Proposal at a cost of $30,000. Consideration and possible action authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond for engineering services wastewater tank investigation as detailed in September 10th, 2022. Proposal at a cost of $10,700 to complete a technical memo with estimated costs for repairs of both issues. Consideration and possible action authorize the chair to execute a contract with Wright Pierce for engineering services for concrete repair details for gravity thickener number one and the grit chamber at a cost of $11,500 as detailed in October 20th, 2022. Proposal consideration and possible action on entering into an agreement with Jennifer Novoline to provide graphic design service for the opioid and addiction task force at a radius $75 per hour with an initial commitment of 10 to 15 hours. Consideration and possible action authorize the chair to execute the contract with Barrett Planning Group LLC housing consultant in the amount of $24,500. Consideration and possible actions on the confirmation and appointment of Brad Goodwin to the Sturbridge Planning Board for a term to expire October 23rd, 2023. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation appointment of Margaret Nevz to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire June 17th, 2024. Consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Chris Wilson and Elaine Cook to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire June 19th, 2025. Consideration. I think there's something missing here in the middle.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the bottom of the other page online.
Yeah. Considerate, perfect. Consideration and possible action for a one-day liquor license for Turi Kante. Michael Placella for wine tasting with appetizers at 538 Main Street, Fistale on January 24th, February 28th, March 21st, April 25th, May 23rd, June 27th, September 26th, October 24th, November 14th, and December 19th, 2023 from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Consideration and possible action on application for common vic license for Michael Placella, Maximus Enterprises LLC. DBA Turi Kante for 538 Main Street, Fistale. Consideration and possible action on a recommendation for the, from the ARPA Subcommittee to allocate $35,000 of ARPA funds to Sturbridge Co-op Nursery School for the purpose of upgrading the fire alarm system as well as for an outdoor playground fencing and safety upgrades. Consideration and possible action to vote on the name change for all properties on Route 15 and Mash Park Road, Route 15 to Haynes Street. Consideration and possible action accept the donation of $500 from Marie Del Dorian of Fistale. The donation will be placed in the revolving Comfort K-9 account. Consideration and possible action on the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, 2023 seasonal population increase estimation. Consideration and possible action for the board to sign the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission's renewal certification for 2023. Consideration and possible action on an application for change of corporate structure filed by the Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to change the corporate name from Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to Sturbridge Seafood Company, Inc. Then we will have old business, new business, correspondence, approval omitted, citizens' firm, and then we will adjourn. So.
Could you repeat all that?
No.
That was a lot.
That was a lot. That was, uh, Sister Mary was back about halfway through. If we could start tonight with, uh, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, nine states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if we could have a moment of silence for all the senseless violence, the Ukrainian people, and all the victims of COVID. Thank you. Public service announcements. Jamie, do you have any?
Uh, none, thanks.
Mary?
No, I just wanted to say I think the common looks beautiful and thank everybody involved in the decorating of it. I know it's a big endeavor and, uh, looks great.
I have none.
And I have none. Town administrator update.
Um, very briefly on, uh, following up on Select Woman Dowling, uh, I just want to thank everybody involved in the tree lighting. I had the opportunity to attend. Um, my husband and I took a ride up and it was beautiful event and, uh, a great job by everybody involved in setting that up. And there's a lot of hands that go into that, so. Great town event. Just to let you all know, I want to thank also the town of Warren. They hosted, um, a representative from Massachusetts procurement. And so I went for training this morning for a few hours. It was mostly people from Warren, but a couple of the town administrators from in and around. So a little bit of procurement training, which never hurts because we sometimes scratch our heads and sometimes people wonder why we just can't get things done quickly, but this, everybody should sit through this three hours and understand why. Also, uh, you'll see on here tonight, uh, coming up, the sewer lining, uh, contract. As I mentioned to you, there's a larger issue going on there. What we're dealing with tonight is a small portion of that. As such, I am working with Southbridge again on that or sort of resurrecting this agreement. We were talking about maybe moving to the pump station and doing a very short agreement with Southbridge. We may have to put that pump station a little bit on hold as we deal with, um, Route 20 on a priority list. So I likely on the 19th or in early January, we'll be bringing to the board, uh, an agreement with Southbridge, just ensuring that we have an out clause for whenever we do want to get it. Just to give you an update on that.
Great, thank you.
That's it for me.
Awesome, thank you.
Robyn, I asked you during the aqua meet if, like, talks were productive and reasonable and you indicated that they are.
Yes, yeah, they are, they are. And, um, you know, understanding that we're not going to pay to develop all the new infrastructure. It's, you know, everybody has to be treated fairly, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn. Heather. All right, next we'll have DPW update.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. So sorry Shane couldn't be here. He did kind of get over scheduled with some other thing and realized he had to be much further away than he thought, so he had to leave early. But I'll give you my quick little rundown of where we are and what we've been working on. So winter plow drivers, um, I will say that we are still looking for contractors. So if anybody's listening and is at all interested, please come and fill out application. We also are still looking for temporary drivers if you don't have a truck but think you would like to make some extra money and have, you know, aren't tied up when it's storming out in the winter and like to plow, please come see us. We have some available spots for that also. We right currently have nine routes that we do not have anybody placed in. I will say we will make it work if we don't have those people because we, we know how to do that, but it just means it will take a little longer for some areas to get plowed and we, and we will be in longer and so will our contractors. So we would really like to have a few more people come, but it, we're not unique in the situation right now. All the towns around are kind of in the same boat. It is getting very hard to find contractors that have the ability to come and plow or have the equipment, so, um, we'll keep working on it. But that's why we have the sign out. We're trying to get some more word out, so we will keep going. 501 Main Street parking lot, um, the contract documents are drafted. I just have to review them, um, make sure they're all set, set some dates, and we'll be going out to bid coming up very soon so that work can be done in the spring. Maple Street Waterline Project, um, that's a grant project that I've been working with EPA on getting the grant award. So we have a earmark in the budget, but now we have to work with EPA to get the actual award. So we are moving that forward. Contract has been awarded and which is okay with the grant. We're working through that. They're, they're all set with that, but we need to do some things on our end to get the grant award letter. Safe first to school. Last time I was here, I told you I was sending, attending the meeting with the DOT and the DOT's engineer, um, and plus the school. So we had a good meeting. We walked over the site, discussed some of the things that previously were discussed. There are some issues, uh, not issues, but items environmentally that need to be looked at as far as making sure endangered species, um, and things of that nature are addressed and making sure, but it, the impacts are going to be so minor, I don't think it's going to be a problem either way, so. But we still have to check, go through all the whole process. Water and sewer billing, I was very busy with the finance department and we were finally successful in getting those water bills out. I apologize for them being so late, but now we're cross-training the two departments so that we make sure that we have lots of staff trained on how to do the actual billing process. I've been working with solar credits, the town accountant, trying to address how they are distributed and getting them, um, our bills paid down. FY '23 paving, we successfully completed all the paving as of last weekend. Um, I think the cemetery, uh, last week, the cemetery got paved, the cemetery entrance road. So we have concluded all our paving. We're very happy with the final outcome. There were some bumpy situations with timing at different points, but I'm happy that it got actually accomplished before it got too cold. We have been doing people's driveways. I think most of everybody's driveways have been addressed where the lips were left and we will be back, um, filling in the edges of the road, making, backing up the edges of the road as the weather allows us, trying to get it done before winter really sets in. Right now we're being pretty lucky, but we'll, we'll keep up on it, so. And, uh, Main Street sewer lining. So last week, we, after, um, last meeting, we kind of explained to you that we did have a problem that we noticed when we were doing our INI cameraing, our inflow and infiltration cameraing that's done every year. Um, we found a section of sewer main on Route 20 that was compromised. Cracked sections of the main on the top were missing. In an effort to not have to dig up Route 20 and replace that whole sewer main, which really wasn't my favorite thing to do right after Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving and Christmas, um, we reached out to a couple of different vendors that do sewer lining, um, cure and place lining and had them view the, the video to see if they thought they could do that and that it, there was enough of the pipes still there that they were able to do that. After contacting four companies, all of them saying, yes, we definitely can do this, I read, I did an emergency scope of work, written scope of work, sent it out to them, got an emergency procurement from, um, the Attorney General's Office so that we could proceed with doing a shortened procurement process. Today we received two bids, written bids, and that contract is here for you today, well, asking you to award it. The contract's not literally here because it was at 2:00, but I will have it drafted so that you can award it this week and we will push going forward. We have to now get a Mass Highway permit to work in the roadway, even though we're not cutting into the roadway to get for the traffic control, but they're already aware of it also. I've had conversations with them. So we are moving forward with that. I will say as, um, Robyn did tell you, when we did the areas on Route 20 that we've already camered, um, the section, some of the lines are showing severe deterioration. So we are probably going to, we, we are going to need to do more addressing that, whether that means full replacement of those mains, which would mean digging up Route 20, or lining of those mains, we need to do more camera work first to be able to determine that. But we're, that is the reason we're shifting our focus. I've already had one engineer give me a estimate, uh, you know, what they think it would cost. It's in the $3 million to $4 million range. If we line it, it's going to be significantly cheaper, but then the questions start to come of, is it, are we going to be capable of lying all the lines? Are, how, and how long is it going to last? But for the short term, lining this section is the best solution, even if it buys us six months.
How long did, well, sorry, can I ask a question? How long did they indicate that the lining will last?
Lining can last a very, very long.
Five years, two years?
Yeah, it, it can last a very long time.
A very long.
It, it could last 20 years, um, but it depends on how well it goes and gets set in there. Um, they'll know one, right after they line it. But the sec, the fact that parts of it were missing, we had to do something immediately. Digging the whole main up in that section of Route 20, which is 16 feet deep, we were looking at maybe 100,000.
So what is a, so let's say within the affected area, if we were to have to line it all, is it, if, let's say if it's three, $4 million to.
Um, I, I think it's, I, I don't want to just.
No, no, but like more proportional.
Probably more in the 30,000, 40,000 for the one segment we're doing, probably a half million to. Especially if we're going to do it as all as one project because then they're not mowing, they're coming, they're doing it. There's actually some scale of the more you do, you know, reasonably in a day because if they have to come set up and they're not going anywhere else.
I think the bigger thing on that too is that not having to dig up 20, the, the disruption. And again, the question is going to be when they put this section of the sleeve and if they get a sense and they say, look, this is only going to hold up six months, then we're likely going to have to do more than sleeve the rest.
And they won't know until they're in.
They don't know until we're in.
Right.
And with most, oh, good, sorry.
I've seen other ones last a very long time. We do, the reason we do that, they do sewer lining and they do these cure and place is because it is effective technology and it is very non, it doesn't disturb the area around it. They're doing this in Boston all the time. They're doing this, so this is a way to extend the life of your infrastructure with very minimal disturbance. It's not cheap, but it buys you time on a compromised line, which is what we have.
And a compromised line that's 16 feet down, which is making this a far more challenging.
If this line was anywhere else in town that was like a normal five, five feet deep, I would have hired a contractor and hadn't come rip it out and put it back in. Where it is made a big difference. Um, it was going to be a major excavation and it was going to cause major issues with detours and, um.
People are pretty amicable to large digging projects on Route 20. I've found that out, yeah, so I don't think it's a big deal. Okay.
Because we've seen such success.
Well, the town's projects work well.
The town's projects will work well, yes. Let's hope. So this is, we're hoping, I, I go to.
Now, what's the duration?
Well, so at this point, we're hoping to have it in before Christmas is our goal. So we're trying to push forward with getting the contract awarded, getting all the information we need for the Mass Highway permit, so the contractor needs to give me their certificate of completion, of, um, insurance so I can include that with the application. So we're going to go through all those steps this week. I'll be very busy.
We're blessed that the long-range forecast looks amicable.
Good this week, right.
So is it like a one, but wouldn't they actually?
Oh, when they come to do it, it's a one-day project.
Oh, it's a one-day project?
They're in and out.
Wow, okay, that's good.
Yes, if everything goes well, it's a one-day project.
I know people.
You'll know with.
They don't want.
We won't be smiling until that day is over. Yeah, until that day is over.
Yeah, we'll all be a little.
I will be holding my breath.
I won't want to see Heather's name show up on my phone that day. Let's just say if I see her call, I'm going to be like, ugh.
Yeah. Till that day is over, I will be holding, crossing my fingers and saying my prayers at night because that, it's a scary situation. Now, granted, it's been like that, it was like that before we even found it, so.
And the advantage, you know, as Heather was saying, the, the advantage of the depth of this is that traffic going over it, there's actually so much depth that it's not like a line that's only four or five feet under where.
If it was shallower and it was there, we would have already collapsed.
As much as it's worse to fix it, it's, it's, yeah, it's a double-edged, definitely.
Double-edged sword. It seems counterintuitive, but the deeper you go, the less that pressure that's coming down, it gets distributed out. All the soils distributes out. So, um, it's not good for trying to dig because 16 feet deep.
And as a reminder, we did let D, uh, we did let, um.
DP knows.
Yeah, DP knows.
Mass DOT knows.
Fine, everybody's on notice about this.
They're all holding their breath with us. And, um, then the other thing is I've just been working budgets, of course, so we've been very busy with that. On my, on our memos of our, what our personnel are doing, um, I think I kind of did touch base on some of it. Most of it really related to all the work we did to prep for paving and then paving and then prepping after paving. Um, we had a busy couple of weeks there supporting the whole paving operation because even when they milled, you know, there's things that we have to do to help them move forward, cleaning leaves off, helping with traffic.
And if we could thank DPW as well, the, uh, the Woo Sox, I don't think this had happened before our last meeting. The Woo Sox came in, uh, we'd had that meeting with them a while back. Mary sat in, Mary Blanchard sat in on it, and, uh, they were doing a cleanup down at Town Barn of the Softball Field. And DPW sent some assistants down and the Woo Sox sent some central office people and their, their grounds people, and they did a real nice cleanup. So thanks to the Woo Sox and for DPW partnering with Recreation on that.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
And they took down our sun shade.
Yeah.
Was a major, so we have all that stuff.
Big Woo Sox man.
Oh, cool.
Pretty neat.
It's good outreach.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
So I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, trying to think if there's any highlights. You know, we continue to do the, some work on all the private roads when we get calls. Um, you know, it's a balancing game. I know a lot of people calling would like us to be there right there that day, but we have to also do all the other roads and all the other projects we go on. I know we're doing some mowing over on Haynes Field, um, area for the, um, conservation area to keep those mowed. We do that basically once a year usually. Our roadside mowing has stopped now for the season, so we're kind of buttoning up and getting ready for winter. We've put some, people will probably see, we've put some stakes out near some of the catch basins and road edges that we know that sometimes are hard to find, so you'll see some orange wood stakes with orange painted tops on them. That's just guides for our plows and for our guys in case we do get a lot of snow, we have to clear off on the catch basins if anybody's worrying, wondering, so. And I know some residents were getting calls about our bids, so if you've signed up for bidding for email notifications, that's why you're getting those things about the water and sewer lining because we had a couple of calls this morning, like, why am I getting these emails? Well, that's when you sign up to know what bids are going out, you're going to get emails about what we're putting out there, so.
Probably already answered this a bunch of times, but what is the status of the Mass DOT work in front of the Yankee County?
So.
Because I mean, they're not working there at all right now, right?
So last, last week, actually, they were doing some work. I think people might have seen some work out there. They've actually taken all their equipment that was behind the construction zone out and prepped that area from what it looks like to me and what I had been assured of for paving. So I think they're going to put some temporary pavement down there so that they can open it up again through the winter. And then I've been assured that they are going to resurface the area that is already in bad shape where the travel lanes are. When exactly that's going to happen, I am not sure, but I have, they have told me that they are. So they aren't working, there is still additional work to be done, but they're definitely not working now through the winter season other than getting it ready so that they could do the paving.
So the expected date of them being totally out of there is the spring or the summer? Or?
Unknown.
It's unknown.
I would say, they're hoping to come back.
They settle their contractual dispute on the.
We don't know that either.
No, we don't know.
Oh, okay, because I thought they were assuring us that they worked it out.
I don't, well, Mass.
Get privy to that information when it's adversely impacting.
Apparently, I believe there's some potential, yeah, I believe there's some potential litigation issues, so.
Well, has anything been filed? Did they file anything in court at this point? Do we know?
I don't know.
I'm not sure. I do know the discussion of litigation.
I know that litigation has been brought up.
I understand. And I thought, correct me if I'm mistaken, but I thought a few months ago that they had assured us that they had worked through there. There was a change order that the state was in approving of and that they worked through that issue. Is that not correct?
But then there were continued issues beyond that.
There was additional issues after that one.
So we're, we're the ones that are suffering the consequences of this dispute.
Oh, yes, yes.
And those businesses over there.
I mean, I guess at some point, do we look at, are we a party to this?
That's what I was just going to say.
That's sort of the next question we have to ask, is the town a party to this in some way? Can we?
What can we do to, you know, that's something that.
And I can talk to KP about that.
Because it's been a couple of years, it's, it's beyond.
Absolutely.
It's ridiculous.
And while they are arguing over their contract, it's our businesses and residents that are being affected.
And we're certainly an interested party in this, but, um, I, I, I'm happy to look into any legal.
I don't want to be with titties, but.
No, I, I.
I think it's legitimate.
We'll ask.
I mean, I don't know what we can do. I don't.
Sure, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure. We can definitely keep making the, asking the questions and, you know, I can keep making my phone calls of, you know, where are we? You said we're going to do this and, and like, I have seen progress to that.
But Heather, I think like.
And at least that they're going to do the paving because my concern was nobody should have to travel through that, like, the winter, that's going to be just downright dangerous.
Particularly in the winter. We had a pothole just outside of it the other day.
Oh, yeah.
We were getting calls on and I had to say to people, I hate saying to people, you have to call the state. I mean, we were also reaching out to them as well. And our DPW is out there putting cones, you know, but, but again, there's liability issues with that too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we want to do the right thing, but no good deed goes unpunished either. If we start stepping in and do something and then someone's car gets damaged now.
All right, we out of hand.
Unliable.
All right, does the board have any other questions for Heather? Good, thank, thank you very much, Heather. Yep.
I'm not going anywhere. I have more things on these. I just want to sit right here. We'll just move into.
We'll jump right into the, uh, to the novel of action items.
Then I will leave.
Yeah. All right, action items. First up, uh, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract for the emergency sewer main lining to Institiform Technologies LLC in the amount of $36,750.
If I might add, um, we have the money in INI for this. We don't have to search elsewhere, so financially we're, we're ready to handle this without any additional burden on the taxpayer or the sewer rate payer.
Great, thank you. So this is, this is the line that you were just talking about.
This is the lining of the, um, sewer line on Main Street between those two manholes. Um, it's about 155 feet. And, um, we got two bids, like I said, they were very close in, in price, so it's, I think we had two solid proposals and I'm pretty pleased in where it came in because we thought it could be even more expensive than this, so.
Good, good. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move to authorize the chair to execute the contract for the emergency sewer main lining to Institute, Institiform Technologies LLC in the amount of $36,750.
Second. Second, we have a motion, we have a second discussion? All in favor? All right, next up, consideration and possible action authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond for engineering services for well number one water treatment plant filter media replacement as detailed in September 5th, 2022. Proposal at a cost of $30,000.
So, um, this is an item that was on the art, one of the articles this year. It's to replace the design and to replace the media in the water treatment plant that our larger plant down near well one. So we have this proposal. We actually did reach out to Wright Pierce. Wright Pierce was almost about double the price that this proposal was, so we did, we are very comfortable going with tie-in bond. Tie-in bond does lots of work for us. Obviously, they're familiar with the water treatment plant, um, and we would like to move forward so that we can get this proposal ready to go out to bid. We won't be bidding this, we won't be doing this work until next fall, next winter because this is work that actually needs to be done over the winter because of the high usage we have in the summer for our water. So we actually taking the media out of all the filters and replacing it with the new media. And if Shane was here, he'd be able to count, give you these lovely millions and millions of gallons of, billions of gallons of water that have gone through our media. So it's time, the media is definitely unspent, and we don't really want to get it to the point where we're seeing breakthrough and having any problems, so.
Was the $30,000 pretty much what we figured before, or is it?
For engineering?
Yeah.
I don't know that we ever had a breakdown, but this, that's a pretty, that's very competitive for what it is.
Okay, great. All right, um, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond for engineering services for well number one water treatment plant filter media replacement as detailed in September 5th, 2022. Proposal at a cost of $30,000.
Second.
Second?
You have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing, four to nothing.
Mary would have voted for it, too.
Mary would have voted for it, yeah. All right, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond for engineering services wastewater tank investigation as detailed in September 10, 2022 proposal at a cost of $10,700 to complete a technical memo with estimated costs for repairs of both issues.
So this is, from time to time, we walk around and we identify problems that we see in the plant. So in one of our clarifiers, we have what we call a baffle wall. The baffle wall is pulled apart from the other, from the other internal wall. So we were going to have it evaluated. That, that clarifier is currently offline. It also needs to be painted, but we need to address the issue with the baffle wall. So they're going to evaluate the baffle wall, give us some recommendations on what needs to be done to fix it, make sure that we're fixing it correctly. At the same time, we've noticed in our tertiary area of our plant, our COMAG, the stainless steel tank seems to have some weeps and some rusting locations alongside some of the seams. So we're going to have them do an evaluation of the COMAG tanks and figure out what the remedial method is for that also. So that will give us the methods to go forward in our next year's budget for what we're going to, how we're going to fix the problems so that they don't become larger problems. So we actually did have Wright Pierce look at one of the issues. Tie-in bond is, was obviously the people that oversaw this plant being constructed. The prices were pretty much comparable, but tie-in bond was a little bit on the cheaper side, so we stayed with tie-in bond on this issue, so.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board? Nope, all right, do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move to authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie-in bond for engineering services wastewater tank investigation is detailed in the September 10, 2022 proposal at a cost of $10,700 to complete with a technical memo with estimated costs for repairs of both issues.
Second?
You have a motion, we have a second, discussion? All in favor?
I will say also, this is already in the budget. We already have the money for it.
Great, okay, good, thank you. Yeah, that's good. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute a contract with Wright Pierce for engineering services for concrete repair details for gravity thickener number one and the grit chamber at a cost of $11,500 as detailed in the October 20, 22 proposal.
All right, here's another one of those little O and M issues that we're having. Some of the areas in our concrete structures of our tanks, so those were, we went for metal, now we're into the concrete structures, are showing sprawling and not really weeping, but like, a lot of the moisture sprawling where we're seeing the concrete have some effervescence coming through, which I'm, Mary's like, what are you talking about?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yes.
I'm waiting for.
Chase is like, okay, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Mary's like, what?
Every profession has their own jargon.
So when you see concrete and it has pockets in it and then has a white look to it, like, almost like it's got white mold or a white, I tried to, it's hard to explain if nobody, if you've not seen it. When a concrete wall has any whiteness coming through, that means there's moisture coming through the concrete, and that's what it's depositing there. It's actually like, almost like a salt deposit. So that's what you see. That's what we're seeing in two of our tanks. We want to address that before it becomes a failure in our tanks. So that is what they're looking at. They'll write a scope of work on how to address it, and so we can go out and get prices. The grit chambers are going to be a little pricey, because we have to bypass the whole plant, basically, that grit chamber to be able to fix it, because it's in the wall of that chamber. But try not to talk over your head. I wish I had pictures, because it's very clear when you see a picture of it, you're like, oh, that doesn't look like the rest of the tank. So that's basically what we're trying to fix.
How, how old is the plant as a whole?
That's a good question. I think it's just, it's probably about 12 to 12 years now?
I thought it was 2009 to 12, like, in that area, no?
So I can tell you this, they were doing plant opening tours when the tornado went through.
Okay, so 11.
That make, that give you a timeframe?
Everything's in the perspective of the tornado.
Well, literally, they were there.
Yeah, when it went through.
When it went through. It was not a good thing.
And are most of these issues, like, I know that he's not here tonight, but in your opinion, are most of these issues normal wear and tear and things that everybody sees? Or are we seeing exponentially more wear and tear than would be typical?
So a lot of them are normal, like.
Just maintenancey?
It's maintenancey, small, like, wastewater treatment plants are maintenance.
Heavy.
Heavy anyways, because of what they are. Could there have been a bad pour in the concrete when it was done 11 years ago? Absolutely, but you're only taking cylinders every so many cubic yards to be even able to check it. So these are things that, when they come up, you can't just not fix. These are things, if you address them head-on within noticing them, they don't become large problems. If you don't, it's not going to catastrophically fail on us tomorrow.
No, but it will eventually, and you won't get the life out of it.
But it will eventually, so we want to keep doing the maintenance.
We don't want to be like where we are with the sewer line.
Right, oh, yeah, no, I was just, I mean, obviously, I don't, I've told Butch before, I'm not a sewer professional, right? So it's hard to judge when you look at the, you know, when you look at the numbers and the dollars, and it's like, wow, it seems, it seems like a lot, you know?
Always needs to repair. It's an expensive infrastructure.
It seems like a lot, but they're very expensive infrastructure and very large.
So you want to maintain it to the highest.
So we have to maintain it, and there, and honestly, you know, I'm not going to, I did a lot of water and sewer stuff in my past life, but I wasn't a concrete specialist. I'm not going to come in here and tell you how to fix your concrete. And to some degree, it's good to have that opinion of the engineer who's going to stamp it and say, yes, this is how you should fix it. Now, do I think what we're going to end up is that we're going to have a welder come in and weld the seam back up and, but I can't tell you how thick that weld should be, and I can't, I can tell you that this is the solution, but I want somebody to say, you need to weld it and you need this thickness of a, you know, this is what you need. And the same with the, with the stainless steel tank. I kind of can tell you where I know we're going, and I know it needs to be done, but I'm not going to write your spec for you on something that, if it did catastrophically fail, I wouldn't want my name to it.
Absolutely, that's fair.
Thank you.
And even, maybe this is more for the people at home, but it's like preventative maintenance is sort of next to godliness with this stuff, and if you have one catastrophic failure, it's going to be more expensive than your whole budget for the year in preventative maintenance. So even if you're being slightly inefficient and overcompensating to the tune of $30,000 or $40,000, it's better than three, four.
That's kind of where I was at with asking, is that, it is a maintenance, and you want to keep it up.
And to that point, it's not just the money, and you're controlling the timing on it as well, because if you have that catastrophic, you have to shut that section down, but perhaps you were planning on maintenance on another section at that point, now you can't shut both down. You know, logistically, something has to be functioning there.
Look at the senior center. I mean, we just didn't do what we're supposed to do, and now it's costing us a fortune to do it, get caught up, you know?
Yep.
So you are definitely reaching the era in your plant that you're going to see more major plant maintenance upgrades, you know, where, and we've been rotating things out. Shane's done a really good job of making sure he rotates his motors and his pumps and checks his VFDs for failure, and, I mean, those are the things, this plant runs 365 days a year, you know, those, it's a, it's always on, you always need it to be on, you need to be as reliable as it can be, because failure is really not an option. You don't want failure here. It's not something that you can afford to turn off and turn back on. It, to some degrees, we have that luxury in our water plant, like, and we have duplicates, so we can go to well four if we have to do maintenance at well, at the well one site for a known outage. You don't want to do it for, we can't do it forever, but we have a little bit of, you know, when we have to schedule to take the filters off, that's why we know we're doing it in the winter, we can run on well four. You don't have that option with a wastewater treatment plant. Yes, we have multiple trains, which allows us to have the one clarifier down that has the issue, but you don't have the ability just to say, okay, we're not going to run for a week or a day or anything.
Bad day. Thank you.
Any further questions regarding that from the board? Not, take a motion?
Sure, I will move to authorize the chair to execute a contract with Wright Pierce for engineering services for concrete repair details for gravity thickener number one and the grit chamber at a cost of $11,500 as detailed in the October 20, 2022 proposal. And I don't know how you got through this whole list.
I'll second Jamie's motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? And Heather, I actually had a question regarding your report that just hit me. Shane had come in about six months ago and said that when they paved 131, they made some mistakes with the water gate valves and stuff. Did the state come fix that, or?
So, interesting enough, they're supposed to be meeting somebody up tomorrow.
They were marked the other day, actually.
We, we had to remark them. The state and their contractors have been, you know, a little bit of butting head match, but they were ordered, I've been working with the state, they, they were ordered to come fix some of the ones that needed immediate attention so that we can make sure that we are able to shut the water main down in case there was any breaks or anything over the winter, so, yes. So they are supposed to come out, I know that they're supposed to meet with a state representative and a contractor tomorrow to go over which exactly ones need to be there.
Good, okay, great.
I don't know if they're going to actually fix the manholes that we've asked them to fix, but at least we'll get the valves operational.
Yep.
I pity the poor state driver that has to go over some of those manholes.
That's going to be a hit.
But we, we told them right out in the beginning, so I do think they'll get addressed. I just don't know that, we can still see. They're paving companies, they, they're still open. The plant is still open, which is good.
Yep, good, okay, well, that's good. All right.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have consideration and possible action on entering into an agreement with Jennifer Novoline to provide graphic design services for the opioid, opioid and addiction task force at the rate of $75 per hour with an initial commitment of 10 to 15 hours.
So we've been getting money consistently as part of the opioid settlements on this nationwide suit. J&amp;J has settled, another conglomerate has settled, Walgreens is sort of next, I think, and possibly settling. And the money's trickling in, it's prorated for different communities. We likely in the end will probably see a total of maybe a few hundred thousand, maybe over the span of 15 years or so. And so we have an internal team of people looking at this. I have both chiefs, police and fire, we have Lucy, the new social services person in the police department. Our library director is involved, and we have a person who worked part-time in the library, and I don't believe she minds that I say this, who's lost two sons to opioids, to drug addiction. And so her voice is really sort of important on this, as well as Annie in recreation, just sort of get a voice of youth and recreation on this. We have taken the position that the need in Sturbridge is information, de-stigmatizing, for example, opioid addiction, and, and what they're finding in a lot of small-town communities is that parents in sort of middle-class communities don't think of heroin addiction as happening in their towns. But because it is often, it often comes as a result of opioid use, sometimes prescribed opioid use, parents tend to say, my kid's not a drug addict, my kid's not a drug addict, my kid's not a drug addict. And I've, I've talked to fire chiefs.
Adults on, adults on.
Adults on a drug, yeah. And elderly even. I mean, it's amazing that, because the opioid. And, you know, I've talked to fire chiefs in different communities, and they'll say that when they go in and use Narcan, and a parent will say, no, no, that's not from drugs, my kid's, my kid's having a seizure. And what they'll try to explain is that if Narcan brings the person back, it is only a drug-related incident. They can't bring him back, Narcan doesn't work on anything except a drug overdose. So that's the evidence to the parents, but there's still such a denial and a stigma. So there are a couple of things we want to do. We want to talk about making recovery accessible for all addiction, alcohol, narcotics, opioid, for all addiction, we want to make recovery more accessible. But one of the other things we want to do is do a de-stigmatizing campaign. And so Becky had worked with a group on her library campaign before, on a, on a graphic person, graphic artist, and she went back, reached out, got this price for us, which seemed very reasonable. It's within our procurement of under 10, so we're, we're fine. The only thing we have to do is the money that's coming in from the opioid has to go into the general fund. They have not allowed municipalities to set up special accounts, and we'd have to go to town meeting to set up a stabilization fund. So right now, it comes in into the general fund. I likely will just have to go to FinCom to get, you know, $10,000 transferred out to a police line item of social services or programs.
How much money do we have right now that we're calling these out?
Ooh, I, I, off the top of my head, I think we'll totally, in the end, get a few hundred thousand. I want to say we might have had about $60,000 in now, $50,000 or $60,000 in.
Was it in this year, it's in this year?
It's in current, and so I'm going to have to transfer over, because I don't have any line items. Next year, what I'm looking to do is actually create a line item, so it'll make it look like our budget went up a little bit, but there's going to be a revenue stream to offset that.
So is that based on our population? Is that how it goes when?
There was a really complicated, yeah, it was a pretty complicated formula that they used. A lot of it was when you first entered into the suit, I was actually still in Rhode Island when we did it, in Cranston, and you had to put what it was that your community needed as a result of opioids. So they based it on, if you were a community that didn't have enough beds, you might get more money because of the cost of the beds. If you were a community that needed more counseling, they, they worked that all into the formula on this, including population.
And their steering committee.
I remember when it came up and we voted to be part of the, the action, we were here, but I didn't know.
They're huge steering committees, do nationally, that negotiate all this stuff. It's super technical, and I don't know what the formulas are, but.
It's a, it is a really complicated suit, because it's not called a class action.
So we're going to create a website to provide information to people for services?
It might be a website, posters, apps, scanning apps, where you can, you know, they have, for AA, for example, you can go on, and it has a meeting app, and you can type in what neighborhood, what, you know, what area, blah, blah, blah. Well, we'll put, we'll have a poster designed with a scan for that app, so someone could just walk by very subtly and do that.
What kind of problems do you think we have in Sturbridge based upon when there, the ambulances?
Yeah, so when talking to the police chief and fire chief, in one week, I believe we had three, four ODs in a, in a matter of days, in a week. We have a problem, some of it is transient because of where we're located, but it's also within our own community. And with the regional school, we're drawing it in from other communities as well. It's, it's in every single community.
And it's getting worse because of fentanyl.
Yeah, dramatically.
Yeah, the overdoses tend to come in batches, because batches of drugs come in in groups, and one's stronger than the next, and people will get bit by it.
And, and, you know, I, I never realized, just talking to Annie, I never realized that they have test strips now, fentanyl test strips, so that if a kid's going to smoke pot, and again, I'm not condoning that, but in the scheme of life, I'm not so worried about them dying from that, but they actually can test, put a fentanyl strip on that marijuana to make sure that it's not laced before they smoke pot.
Yeah, they're putting fentanyl in all drugs right now. It is, you can be, think you're, you're doing an hallucinogenic drug or something like that, or some sort of light party drug, and you'd be taking fentanyl.
Yeah.
And even down to like, somebody doing it in a bathroom, in a public restroom, and you going in and wiping your hand across something and getting it that way, too.
Literally, it's that, and it's that transmittable, and that, that deadly, that police officers are actually having to be Narcan back from interfacing with a person. It's that dangerous.
It's scary.
It's really, it's beyond frightening. So this is sort of short money, but awareness, we, we really decided that, you know, with the money that we have, we're not going to build a hospital, we're not going to build a rehab center. Lucy has tremendous connections to rehab centers, so our next step is going to be, how do we get people there? We're looking at, are there ways for us to help even assist in transportation? Somebody who's in AA may not have a license, but may say, you know what, I need to go into recovery tonight. And if you don't take, if they don't take advantage of that moment to go into recovery, that window, they may not get there. But, you know, we're even looking at, are there ways we can partner with Uber, or, you know, just something that we can do. So those are the bigger picture things down the road. In the short term, we're figuring, the one thing we can do in the short term is awareness.
Scary.
Very frightening.
All right, any, any other questions from the board regarding that one? All right, do we have a, you, you'd like a motion for that one, right? Yeah.
Just to support the, going into that agreement with her, it's sort of a contract with a consultant, so.
I will move to support the agreement with Jennifer Nova Line and to provide graphic design services for opioid and addiction task force at a rate of $75 per hour with an initial commitment of 10 to 15 hours.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
And we will roll that campaign out to the board when it's time, when we have it.
Thank you. All right, next, we have consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Barrett Planning Group LLC Housing Consultant in the amount of $24,500.
So this is, Jean Bouvan took the lead on this. This is our next step in our housing trust. And we did, we got quotes. There were very limited numbers of people who could do it, who would do it, and we need to get rolling on it. So Jean and I reviewed the bids. We're both comfortable with this, and we asked for the support on this. We're going to probably have an initial meeting in February with them, and then have the housing trust. You'll be getting names from me for the housing trust probably on December 19th for candidates for that, so. Yep.
All right.
I will make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. I move to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Barrett Planning Group LLC Housing Consultant in the amount of $24,500.
Second.
Awesome. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Great. All right, next, we have consideration and possible action on the confirmation appointment of Brad Goodwin to the Sturbridge Planning Board for a term to expire October 23, 2023. Brad, you want to come up and introduce yourself to everybody?
So if I could just quickly talk a little bit about this, we had posted for planning, we posted for conservation, we posted for housing, open space. I have a bunch of committees and commissions coming up. And so we did like six interviews in a day, or seven interviews in a day. And what I found was, people would apply for one, but it would turn out they had skill sets that really matched another, and not necessarily what they applied for. So everybody I interviewed, though I think we interviewed you pretty much straight for planning, but a lot of people that I interviewed, I said, you know, hey, I might have this position, are you interested? So they sort of morphed into sort of generic interviews based on what I was looking at on people's resumes. So Jean and I handled a number of interviews, and it was like putting pieces of a puzzle together. So who are my most qualified people to sit on these boards? We had a number of applicants that wanted planning initially primarily. I think we had, what, seven? Yeah, I think I had six or seven just for planning alone. Mr. Goodwin interviewed, was obviously phenomenal on the interview. Jean and I were both very comfortable with that selection. We had some very, very qualified people, people who sat on planning boards in other communities. But, but Mr. Goodwin's knowledge of the town, his approach to planning, and the fact that he sat on design review for a while now certainly makes him a more than qualified candidate. So I highly recommend Mr. Goodwin for this position.
Great, great. I agree with that 100%. So, do we have a motion? Yeah, you want me to?
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we appoint, or do we confirm the appointment with Lynn? Would you want me to use?
Confirm. I believe it's confirmation.
Yeah, I make a motion that we confirm Brad Goodwin to the planning board for a three-year term. Sorry.
No, it's 2023.
Oh, sorry. For a term to expire October 23, 2023.
It's a replacement. It fills till the end of the next.
Okay.
Then it's up for a reappointment.
I'll second.
No, okay.
I'll second Mary's motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah. Good luck, congratulations.
You guys.
All right.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Next up, we have consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Margaret Nevs to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire June 17, 2024.
So Ms. Nevs had applied for planning and is very qualified, did sit on a planning board, I believe, when she lived in Grafton. She's a very sharp woman, very knowledgeable woman, and it also has the availability during the day to sit on design review, which is sometimes challenging for us to find. So I reached out to her, we asked her if she would be willing to take on that position instead of planning. She indicated that she was interested in that. She was planning on being here this evening, but she got tied up with a work commitment.
Yeah, she sent an email.
She sent an email that she felt very badly that she could not be here this evening, but Jean and I both felt very comfortably with this selection.
Great, great. And any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I will, I will move to confirm the appointment of Margaret Nevs to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire June 17, 2024.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Next, we have consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Chris Wilson and Elaine Cook to the Design Review Committee for a term to expire June 19, 2025.
Just reappointment.
Assuming reappointments, and any questions from the board? No questions, do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move to reappoint Chris Wilson and Elaine Cook to the Design Review, and Design and Review Committee for a term to expire June 19, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Nice. All right.
One-day liquor license for Tootie, so Jay, it's there, and then goes on to.
Thank you. Next up, we have consideration and possible action for a one-day liquor license for Tootie Conte, Michael Placella for wine tasting with appetizers at 538 Main Street, Fisdale on January 24th, February 28th, March 21st, April 25th, May 23rd, June 27th, September 26th, October 24th, November 14th, and December 19th, 2023, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Do we have anybody here from? Nice. Thank you for coming.
Look, you got a year's worth of licenses out of one.
Very organized. So you know where you're going to be December 19th, 2023.
For now, I do. Amazing.
Does the board have any questions, or would you like to say anything about what's going on, or?
No, I mean, you know, this is an extension. We had, we had four in the last quarter of the fiscal year, calendar year, and it went very well. We continue to support the community between Ted and the Herb Fest and the Federated Church, so we're doing a lot of good things for the community as well.
Nice.
These are very well-attended. We're sold out. I mean, sold out. We're reservationed out months in advance, so they just want to continue this process.
Great, great.
Well, I can speak that a lot of residents are very happy that you opened. And I was going to ask, so no drop-ins, you have to.
You have to make a reservation, right. So we limit, this is a way for us to manage the occupancy of, to be in alignment with what the building inspector has given us, or the fire department.
Great, great. So.
Makes sense to me.
No, no more questions. Do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Tootie Conte, Michael Placella for wine tasting with appetizers at 538 Main Street, Fisdale on January 24th, January, February 28th, March 21st, February 21st, I can talk, April 25th, May 23rd, June 27th, September 26th, October 24th, November 14th, and December 19th, 2023, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second. Great. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Hey, thank you for everything.
We have one coming up in December that we?
We do. Tuesday, December 13th, I believe.
And that's sold out?
Done.
Nice. Now, is there a cost to comp?
Not as of yet, no. No. So, I mean, I did this as a fallback in case I want to start to charge. But right now, it's, right now, it's, it's open without, without charges.
Awesome.
Great.
I think I'm up next, too.
Yeah, you're on, you're on again.
Perfect. Consideration and possible action on application for common victory license for Michael Placella, Maximus Enterprises LLC DBA Tootie Conte for 538 Main Street, Fisdale, Mass. Pretty self-explanatory there, so.
Easy to read back.
Exactly.
So moved.
Yeah, so we're going to hit with a motion there, or so moved?
Yeah, I will move to approve the application for the common victory license for Michael Placella, Maximus Enterprises LLC, DBA Tootie Conte for 538 Main Street, Fisdale.
Second.
We got a second motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great night.
You too. Have a great holiday, guys.
Get a lot of people.
Christmas lights are good, too.
And.
I'm trying to get them not to flash.
It's working to slow everybody down in that section of the road, I think.
Every time the timer goes off, it resets them.
And maybe, I know you're not on board, but consider staying open a little longer on Sundays.
Actually, we're trying to, we're thinking about shifting it from 10 to 12 to like 12 to 2.
I like that. I don't always make it when I get out.
Mary might not make it regardless of the time. She made a little late.
Every time that Mary stuck her foot in the door and that was closed.
Everyone's got my number. Hopefully, I have other strengths.
If that's the worst, if that's the worst character flaw, you're in good shape. That's not a bad one. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. All right, next up, consideration and possible action on a recommendation from the ARPA Subcommittee to allocate $35,000 of ARPA funds to the Sturbridge Co-op Nursery School for the purpose of upgrading the fire alarm system, as well as the outdoor playground fencing and safety upgrades.
So I had gone on a tour of the co-op. I hadn't seen the place, and what an adorable little place that is. And while I was there, we also had known that we were going to need some fire alarm upgrades. The price had come in a little higher than what we had originally had budgeted. And so while I was there, they took me on a tour of the little front playground, and there are things like railroad ties that need to go. There's a fence that's not secure. It's just not the best environment, physically, physical environment, as much as the, the, the social and emotional environment seems phenomenal and educational environment. So I brought that back to ARPA, and our ARPA group unanimously agreed to put $35,000 to upgrading that a little bit. See, they seem to be such a great partner with the community.
That's awesome. As a Sturbridge Nursery School alumni.
Ah, I figured it would be.
I was thinking, are you also an alumnus?
Yes, and me and my son had the same teacher. I was the first year, she was teaching.
Oh, wow.
Mrs. Moran has done an awesome job over there.
It's a great place, and the young woman who's running it now does a phenomenal job in running it. And she's talking about if she can upgrade, upgrade that playground enough to start to maybe run some summer programs to utilize that building in the summer, because it's not fully utilized. But that she would like to potentially look at doing something for special needs children. So if we can fund this a little bit like this and help her fix that up, that would be a nice thing. So it's all good stuff. That's a good part of the job.
Yes, it is. So do we have any other questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move to approve the ARPA Subcommittee allocation of $35,000 of ARPA funds to the Sturbridge Co-op Nursery School for the purpose of upgrading the fire alarm system, as well as for outdoor playground fencing and safety upgrades.
I'll second that, and kudos to the ARPA Committee and Mary for spending the money on good stuff.
I have to admit, it's a fun committee to thank you for pointing me out to. Because we get to make recommendations on spending money as opposed to cutting money, so.
I like four of the five people.
Right, you love the fifth. Love the fifth one, right. We just saved you on that one.
I'm thinking it was fine.
I'm sure you're okay.
That's different. All right.
Set it and vote it?
No, we, so we have a motion, a second, and now we have a vote.
We voted it all. Oh, no, Ian thanked the committee, yeah, you're right.
So we got a four to nothing there. Am I?
Did we, did we drop a liquor license from the?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep. First page, you didn't realize it moved everything on your second page. Yeah.
Don't worry. Next up, we have consideration and possible action to vote on the name change for all properties on Route 15 and Mashpog Road, Route 15 to Hayne Street.
Yes. So we had, early on, when I first got here, I got a complaint from a resident who said that he was having trouble getting deliveries at Route 15 slash Mashpog. Apparently, it is the old abandoned Route 15. Part of it is Hayne Street, part of it is Route 15 slash Mashpog. The town changed it to Mashpog slash Route 15 at some point. And then Pilot uses Hayne Street address. GPS takes you 20 different ways to 20 different addresses. We all put our GPS in one day, Waze and GPS and Google and Apple, and they all came up with different ways to get to the same spot, but it didn't get you where you needed to be. The other issue of concern is that when you're going, when you're heading west on 80, on 15, or Hayne Street, Mashpog goes up off to the left, but Mashpog also now goes straight. The problem is the numbers don't go like from top all the way down to the bottom. They climb this way and they climb that way. So if you need to go to 400 Mashpog, you're going to go up this road, you're going to hit 200 and it ends. And when in reality, 3 and 400 are over here. So it, it's havoc. So we sent a letter out to every property owner on that strip, Hayne Street down. Much of it is Commonwealth-owned property, some of it's town-owned property. And we had a couple of residents show up last week, and we asked them, our proposal was to just make it Hayne Street all the way down. They are all on board. They don't mind going through yet another address change if this corrects it for them. They seem very happy with that. And the other thing that was interesting to find out is their deeds all say Hayne Street.
So they won't have to change them, because that was my thought.
Because that's a huge problem. So when they changed from 15 to Mashpog 15, the deeds still say Haynes. None of their deeds are changed. So that, I would imagine legally, is going to be problematic down the road somewhere for people, you know. So they're, they're all on board. And I said, well, you know, and now it's the selectmen, the street commissioners, we're going to ask you for the authority to just renumber that whole thing as Hayne Street.
Cool.
There was no resistance to it. Not, not one negative.
That just stops with us. We don't have to go any further.
Yeah, as long as you approve it, we'll start putting signs up. And then they want, we're all going to look at some signage for them. Traffic issues, traffic mitigation, we're continuing to work on, but this was the first big step.
Cool. All right, any questions from the board? It's an easy one. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to vote on the name change for all properties on Route 15 and Mashpog Road to Route 15 to Hayne Street.
Nice. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next up, consideration and possible action accept the donation of $500 from Marie Dildorian of Fisdale. The donation will be placed into the revolving Comfort K9 account. So, nice.
Toward Rocky.
Yeah, absolutely, very nice. Do we have a motion?
Sure, I will move to accept the donation of $500 from Marie Dildarian of Fisdale. The donation to be placed in the revolving Comfort K9 account.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very nice. Well, thanks. Consideration and possible action on the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission 2023 seasonal population increase estimation. So this is.
This is open last year, and I talked to the town park as far as the population, and there were a couple of things that were, we're seeing okay to stay the same from what I look at, so.
Yeah, what do we go up to 20,000 in the?
20,000. And even with the new parks and everything, Lynn said we were sold way under the 20,000, so.
Okay. Cool, so we'll. So are we just saying 20,000 again, or?
I guess just a continuation of whatever's.
So just a continuation.
I would, yeah, I would just motion for a renewal certificate for 2023 with no change.
Okay.
Which might be how to motion that.
Do we have a motion on that?
I will move to renew the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission 2023 seasonal population increase estimation at 20,000. That work?
Yeah, will that work, Rob? That'll work. Yeah, okay. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
You have a motion, a second, all in favor? Consideration and possible action for the board to sign the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission renewal certification for 2023.
I will move that we sign the previously discussed renewal certificate for 2023 with an estimated population of 20,000.
Second.
Second, and any discussion? All in favor?
I like how liberal Ian is now with these alcohol.
And now that I can help.
Consideration and possible action on an application for change of corporate structure filed by Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to change the name, to change the corporate name from Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to Sturbridge Seafood Company Inc. Do you want to come up? Yeah, I don't think we'll have any hard-hitting questions, but.
I didn't know. Hopefully, no. We could have moved you up. I thought you might have been Citizens Forum.
If there were any questions, not that I'd be able to answer them anyway, but.
I looked over at Michelle and said, do you know what she might do?
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I just hurried up and do it, but that's all. We're just trying to change the corporate name, so.
Makes sense. All right, I will move to approve the application for change of corporate structure filed by Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to change the corporate name from Sturbridge Seafood Company LLC to Sturbridge Seafood Company Incorporated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second.
Second, thank you.
Can we just go back to reconsider the motion on number, letter P?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not the 20,000 seasonal, so that one just needs you to make a motion.
To renew?
Yeah, to renew certificates from 2023 with no change.
Yeah, so I will change my former motion to renew for 2023 with no change.
Okay. Second.
Second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
That's right. And then we'll vote on the Sturbridge Seafood. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Yep, this is cool. Cool. We're good.
Beautiful.
All right, old business. Jamie, do you have any old business?
Not tonight.
No, I thought Mary had to go at 7:30.
Well, I did, I decided to stick it out since we're so close to here.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'm all right.
No old?
No.
Ian, do you have any old? I have no old. Next up, new business.
None.
Jamie, new. Mary?
No.
I have none. Ian? Correspondence.
Do we have any?
I haven't seen any.
I haven't seen any.
No, Michelle, no correspondence? Okay.
All right, cool. Next, approval of minutes, December 20th, 2021, and March 7th, 2022. I don't remember yesterday, never mind December 20th, 2021.
How did these come up? I'm just curious. We just forgot about?
No, the, yeah, so the December one came up because we needed the minutes from the December meeting for the bonding authority for the senior center. And when we started to look for the December minutes, they, we had the tape, we didn't have the minutes. So we went back, and Michelle realized that's what she had been out with COVID, and then you had an interim town administrator, and so we said, ooh. We had, and I had all the ones up to it and all the ones after it. The one I needed, we didn't have.
So that's always the way.
Yeah.
I will move to approve the December 20th, 2021 minutes.
I'll second that. Your motion? All in favor? Nice. Then we have one more, right? We have.
I don't think we, oh, March 7th.
They were at, we did do separately.
Oh, that was one.
Yep.
Yeah, I did see that one.
I missed that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve March 7th, 2022?
So moves.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
One abstention.
Yes, you abstained.
All right, and motion, citizens from? Nope. Motion to adjourn?
So moves.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you, everybody.